We have reconvened with all members present for June 28 meeting at the Red. And as I said, all members are present, so please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for both the executive minutes of both May 24 and June 14, 2021.
So moved.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and a motion for the regular minutes of June 14, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
And before I go into my greetings, I do want to take a moment for a moment of silence for several Madison resident, longtime residents we lost recently, actually one dates back to January and regretfully I missed. Amadeo Frank Mccone, longtime resident of Madison passed away on January 6th at the age of 90. Frank was born in July 1930 at his parents' home on Central Avenue. He received his bachelor's degree from Seton Hall and worked for various companies until retiring from IT and T. In later years, he could be found around town, perhaps eating lunch at Nautilus Diner or Stop and Shop. He owned nine Central Avenue where his father Alexander was a barber for over 75 years, well into his 90s. Many of us have grew up in Madison, remember Alex there. Frank is survived by sisters Lorraine and Helen and many nieces and nephews. Mary Mastropono, lifelong Madison resident, passed away on June 23, 2021. She was 88, just two dot age shy of her 89th birthday. Born in Morristown in 1932, grew up in Madison with her nine siblings and graduated Madison High School. Lifelong richener at St. Vincent Martyr Church. She married the love of her life, James Mastropono, on September 7, 1952. And the couple settled in their hometown in Madison where they raised her family. She was a friendly and familiar face at Stop and Shop for over 25 years. She voted an dependable teammate member working primarily in the produce department for most for years there. As she was a parent, she was predeceased by her husband of 39 years. And her son Larry Mastropono, she's survived by her daughter Linda and George and then her husband George, two sons, James and Michael. And one sister Fran, six grandchildren, one great grandchildren child. And Peter Paul Siciliano Senior, lifelong Madison resident, passed away on June 13th, age of 94. Was a father, grandfather, Marine veteran of World War II. Born in Jersey City in October 1926, his family settled in Madison when Peter was only five years old. Where he was raised with his sister Betsy. Attended St. Vincent Martyr Elementary School, 1944, graduated Madison High School. And he then answered the call to service and enlisted in the Marine Corps. Proudly served in the Pacific during World War II from 44 to 46. Taking the rank of corporal before his honorable discharge in December of 1946. He married Natalie Paco on November 26, 1949, and they settled in Madison where they raised their family. They were married for 60 years. He was a member of the Painters and Allied trade union for 30 years. Active member of St. Vincent Martyr Church throughout his life, where he was a volunteer church counter on Sundays. Volunteered his time at Lyons Medical, Lyons Hospital to assist his fellow veterans. And he was a leader in establishing the Madison Little League program in 1950. Served as a coach, manager, umpire and league official. For 25 years of service, he was inducted to Madison Little League Hall of Fame in 2002. And he was the grand marshal of our Madison, of our Memorial Day parade in 2017. His parents, he was predeceased by his wife Natalie in 2009, survived by his daughter Paula, son Peter Junior and four grandchildren. Let's take a moment to remember Frank Mccone, Mary Mastropono and Peter Siciliano. And let us pass our thoughts on to family and friends they leave behind. Thank you. And welcome all tonight. And this is, I've lost track of this, is going to be our third or fourth official heatwave of a very young summer. So next couple of days, please be careful when you're outside, keep hydrated. Try to reduce your power consumption during peak hours of the day. You know, raise your temperature on your AC a few degrees, you'll still be comfortable while reducing your electric consumption and helping the overall grid. This Wednesday, Madison is joining the Tatum for E Pluribus Unum, an event to celebrate our diversity. This will take place from 6:00 to 8:30 on the Lum Lawn, which is adjacent to the train station parking lot. So please take time to visit that. And just a couple of, or one agenda related comments, that agenda or ordinance 29 related to the funding of the basketball court. Will be cabled pending the lease update of the pool lease. And this is to make sure everything's in place, there seems to be a lot of confusion around this, and so it's the best way to approach it. This was just the appropriation of funds and the lease would have been updated afterwards. We're just going to reverse the order, so we have everything in place. This, the concept behind this again was, would be to complement heavily used field basketball courts. And but the biggest thing is that the court, these courts would have been completely in the land lease area if the community pool were in. That's where we need to work on that update. So that will be back at a later date, there will not be any hearing for this ordinance. It will be reintroduced after the lease is revised and there'll be hearing at that point. All right, and that's all I have today. For now. Let's go to reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, June 22, around 12:45, the fire department, the fire department responded along with other agencies to assist the Morris Township Fire Department at the West Governor Morris Hotel for a CO incident. The entire hotel had to be evacuated due to high levels of CO on all six floors. All rooms had to be searched, there were no injuries. All occupants were allowed to repopulate the hotel after the building was cleared. Then on Wednesday, June 23, approximately 6:30 PM, the fire department was dispatched to a reported house fire on North Street. Firefighters were able to quickly extinguish the fire that was burning on an exterior third floor deck in the rear of the structure. No residents were displaced, a carelessly discarded cigarette is believed to have caused, been the cause of the fire. The fire department will be marching in Florham Park's Fourth of July Parade, which is on Monday, July 5. The parade starts at 9:30 AM. From the Police Department, all Madison police officers will be trained in Autism Shields Training, which is advanced field training on responding to calls involving individuals with autism. The training provides officers with information to enhance better recognition of a person with autism and response methods for officers in field situations and provides methods for MPD to proactively work with individuals with autism and their families. Patrolman Carmen DeCaro's last day at work was June 25. He will retire with 28 years of service with the Madison Police Department. We wish Patrolman DeCaro a lifelong Madisonian well wishes in his retirement. Finally, the Madison Police Department has been invited to start a pilot program with the Morris County Communication Center. A 911 caller who places a call from a cell phone will receive a text message survey 72 hours later regarding how the call was handled. This will enable county communications administrators to get feedback from users as to the quality of the 911 telephone interaction. Madison has their 911 calls fielded by the Morris County Communications Center. Calls are sent to us and dispatched by Madison Communications Personnel. This allows the 911 call taker to stay on the phone with the caller while the Madison dispatcher relieves pertinent information to first responders. And finally, the National Weather Service has issued a heat advisory for Madison through Wednesday, June 30. With high temperatures climbing into the 90s, will feel close to 100 with humidity. Cooling centers are open throughout Madison for residents in need. At the Madison Public Safety Complex, 62 Kings Road, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At the Madison Public Library on Keep Street, Monday to Wednesday, 9:00 to 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Thursday to Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They are closed on Sunday. The Madison Civic Center at 28 Walnut Street, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30. And Hartley Dodge Memorial Building, Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you, and now Finance Bureau Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are going to discuss the audit. As is customary, each council member received a copy of the document. And I'm happy to say that the audit was clean and only contained two very minor findings. One involves segregation of duties, which is a relatively minor comment and one we have discussed for a number of years. Many towns in New Jersey have the same comment and it happens because the town does not have a central cashier window. Most payments that Madison receives are credit card or check. So the amount of cash involved is not significant. And it would be very inconvenient to the resident if we created a central cashier window because the customer would have to go to the department, get a payment slip, go to the cashier, which could be in another building, make a payment, then go back to the department and pick up their documents. And the corrective action plan in the audit states, management has determined that the increased costs and related inconvenience to the residents of the borough associated with resolving the finding are not reasonable at this time. The second comment involves the tracking of very small payments for dog and cat licenses. And there were some administrative issues at the Health Department with these payments. But I mean, COVID was also going on and we had a pandemic, they were quite busy. So this process has been resolved and so there are no worries on this finding. And tonight, the council will vote on approving the corrective action plan. Once approved, the chief financial officer submits the document to the state of New Jersey. Each elected official is also required by state statute to sign an affidavit certifying that they have reviewed the document and are familiar with these comments and recommendations. And so I'd like to thank the Audit Committee, the members of the Audit Committee who helped and supported this process. And I would also like to thank the staff, Sandy Emmerich, Kevin O'Keefe, Chrissy Mahler and Sarah Murphy for continuing to promote the internal controls and processes and for being good stewards of the public dollars. The record keeping and work they do behind the scenes is important and helps keep the borough in a strong financial position. I would also like to give a heartfelt thanks to our CFO, Jim Burnett, who works tirelessly to keep the finances of the borough in order. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now Public Works Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for the Hartley Dodge, well, for engineering for the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza. Merrill Edgar Agusso mobilized and began the removal of Granite Plaza Block on Monday, June 7. And has completed the removal of the lower wall, lower plaza, lower stair, upper plaza and a portion of the upper stair, approximately 4,000 square feet of pavers. Please note, all general public access to the municipal building is via the West Wing courtroom ramp for the duration of the six month project. So Felly Construction initiated work on June 1st and has now completed curb and driveway replacement, topsoil and seed on the outer perimeter of both Anthony and Wayne Boulevard. Approximately 3,200 feet of curb line. A weekly status report is available on the Rosnet website. If there are specific concerns about the construction work, please contact either the Madison Police or the Borough Engineer. Microwave, Micropave Incorporated completed crack ceiling work on 10th Streets or approximately four miles of road center line and 18 miles of ceilings. Several interesting public hearings continue being reviewed by the Madison Land Use Boards. Please stay tuned for the, via the website. Grant funding assistance applications will be submitted this week for Waverly Place Reconstruction, Memorial Park Trails and Dodge Field Playground. Final reimbursement requests will be submitted for Greenwood Avenue North MA 19 and Burnett Road MA 20. And the Department of Public Works, the new snow thrower purchased from the town of Kearney has been delivered and DPW mechanics are outfitting it to adapt to our heavy snow removal equipment. It's more energy efficient than our existing 30 year old unit and automatically shuts off when idling in place, reducing greenhouse gases. The recyclable disposable market is returning to pre-pandemic levels. Instead of paying, us paying to dispose of recyclables, we're now receiving modest monthly revenue from the recycling vendor. The Mechanical Division will be implementing updated software regarding vehicle repairs and diagnostics consistent with current automobile and truck manufacturers' best practices. EPW assisted in clearing a blocked building drain at Hartley Dodge and worked to clean up the water damage to the committee conference room. EPW will be upgrading a pump and grinder at the Lorraine Road Pump Station to resolve flow problems. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The senior bus is back with limited service. The latest schedule, which is subject to change, can be found on the senior services page of Rosnet. Trips to Stop and Shop and Shop Right, as well as custom rides within Madison are available to Madison seniors weekly. To make a reservation, please call 973-593-3095 and select option one. They will begin taking reservations at 8:00 AM for same day trips. A trip to Walmart has been scheduled for this Wednesday, June 30. Spots are limited, so call today to reserve your seat. In accordance with COVID regulations, face masks are required while riding the bus. A reminder that Bottle Hill Day, along with the Chamber PBA 92 Car Show is being planned for Saturday, October 2. If you'd like to be an event sponsor or to participate as a vendor, please email ddc@rosnet.org. The farmer's market continues to be open every Thursday through November 18 from 1:00 to 6:00. And that is it, Mayor.
Thank you, now Utilities, Ms. Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last two weeks, the Electric Department has been working on the service upgrade for the new building being constructed at Ford Community Place. And we had several callouts for the standby crew. On June 18, the crew was called out to 20 John Avenue for an emergency market where a contractor had accidentally cut through a gas line. On the 19th, the standby crew responded to Green Village Road and Crescent Road, where the homeowner's tree had fallen and pulled the wires off their house. The crew was able to rehang the wires for that interrupting service. And on the June 23, the standby crew was called out to 51 Madison Avenue, which is Pine Acres for a partial power problem. The crew discovered that a bird had tripped the fuse and they replaced the fuse and checked for proper voltage. The Water Department reports that they are continuing to update the water meter system by installing radio readable smart meters. Anyone interested in having their meter updated to be automatically read, please call the Water Department and schedule an appointment. I did this myself a few weeks ago and I'm happy to have my new water meter in place. No more meter readings will be needed here and we won't have to have any more estimated readings either. The Water Department also reminds us to please remember to have your electronic lawn water sprinkler rain sensors checked or installed to help save water and not irrigate lawns on rainy days. Please refrain from watering between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM when 50% of the water used is lost immediately due to evaporation. And please be sure to reduce your zone times to a minimum because the water used to have a lush lawn is everyone's drinking water. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Health, Mr. Lindgren.
Thank you, Mayor. Madison reports 877 total confirmed cases of COVID-19 with no new positive tests in the last seven days. The continued decline of cases in Morris County and New Jersey has slowed and flattened over the last 10 to 14 days. New Jersey is seeing an increase in the activity of the Delta variant. The impact of variants is being monitored by the New Jersey Department of Health and CDC. Vaccines remain the best way to prevent or reduce the severity of the disease for all COVID-19 infections, including those caused by known variants. Morris County was the first New Jersey county to achieve the goal of 70% of adults vaccinated while ahead of the initial goal of June 30. As of this, as of Friday, 74% of Madison adults have been vaccinated with 81% receiving at least one dose. While these are important milestones, those 12 years of age and over who have not yet been vaccinated should do so as soon as possible. Vaccines are readily available on the same day, on a same day appointment or walk-in basis at many locations. While not offered walk-in appointments, the Madison Health Department has a number of openings for adult vaccine clinics using the Johnson and Johnson single dose vaccine. And as usual, visit rosenet.org for continuing updates on New Jersey's vaccine programs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we're moving on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council received an email dated June 21 from Avita Baff of Central Avenue regarding the Madison community pool operations. Just one.
Thank you, and now we move on to invitations for discussion. As always, this one is limited to the, our agenda discussion, which is the 2020 Municipal Audit and Corrective Action Plan and the resolutions that I will be reading shortly. If you want to comment on the ordinances, the ones that have hearings, that will be the appropriate time when we open the hearing for that ordinance. The ones that are being introduced, you may comment on those during the second comment period. And also that's the time when you may comment on any other topic. And as always, we ask you try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. But we will give you a one minute grace and stop you at four. These are the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. Resolution 179 is awarding contract for installation of water meters and AMI communication modules to Meter Tech of Kennelworth. And this is not to exceed $35,000 and is funded through ordinance 412019. Or Resolution 180 is approving probationary firefighter list. And this is a list as vacancies come up in the fire department, we move through the list and the hiring. And Resolution 18081 is hiring the first one on the list, appointing Troy Pohwicke to the position of probationary firefighter. And this is replacing maybe retired Lieutenant Kevin Williams. Resolution 182 is authorizing a 350,000 NJ DOT municipal application for Waverly Place and Reconstruction. We have a deadline of next week to get this grant application in, so we are approving this before we've gotten further down the line with the designs. We anticipate in the coming months, there will be presentations of the proposed improvements to Waverly Place and with various stakeholder groups, so please stay tuned. And also obviously, the council will be approving the final project. Again, we want to get our application in for a $350,000 grant for that project. Resolution 183 is authorizing purchase of vehicle accessories for Public Works Department through New Jersey Co-op Pricing, this is funded through ordinance 2421 and not to exceed $62,488.50. Resolution 184 is authorizing use of the Emergency Operations Center at the Public Safety Complex for Philly Dickinson to conduct a graduate course, this is just on five Saturdays. Resolution 185 is awarding a contract to Hopman Equipment for the purchase of Duesland LCV8 light power generator accessories under Sourcewell. And this is an amount of $11,047.33 funded through ordinance 25-2021. Resolution 186 is proclaiming, this is great to have this resolution right in front of us right now, October 2nd, as Bottle Hill Day and authorizing the beer garden. Forward to a great Bottle Hill Day. Resolution 187 is accepting the 2020 audit, you'll be hearing about that shortly. Got a lot of pages here, sorry, a lot of resolutions to go through. Resolution 188 is approving the 2020 corrective action plan, which we'll be hearing about shortly and Austria already queued that up. Resolution 189 is renewing liquor license for 2021, 2022 for the Prospect Tavern. Resolution 190 is authorized Eagle Scout project for painting of the black, white, white and black squares on the Madison train overpasses. Resolution 191 is approving liquor license application submitted by the BPOE, the Elks for instant raffle games. Resolution 192 is ratifying the appointment of intern Henry McCann as intern for the Environmental Commission and Senator Madison, this is a volunteer position. Resolution 193 is authorizing contracts of Rio Supply under the Morris County Co-op Pricing Council for water meters, data recorders and frequency meter interface units. And this is does exceed the 17,500 threshold, which is why we're going to co-op. And Resolution 194 is awarding a contract to James Irish Inc. for control and removal invasive species at Madison Recreation Complex, not to exceed 27, 27, 750, let me try to get $2,775 and funded through ordinance 21-2019. Resolution 195 is awarding contract to NJ Tree Foundation for tree planting at the Madison Recreation Complex and not to exceed $8,613 and funded through ordinance 21-2019. And then Resolution 196, approving raffle licenses for the Thursday Morning Club. So those are the resolutions, wait a minute, I think I have one sticking there. Excuse me, Resolution 197 is the purchase of six enhancer solar powered RRFB crosswalk. Those are the flashing crosswalk signs we have in several town, places in town already. Not to exceed $43,860. And this is funded through ordinances 4-2019 and 21-2021. So if you want to comment on any of those resolutions or the audit, you may raise your hand now by clicking your hand if you're online or if you are on a phone, hit star nine, once you are recognized, state your name, your address and then the resolution or the agenda item you're commenting on. Again, if you're commenting on other things, you wait till the second round. And right now, I do not see any hand up. My hand is back up again. Welcome, Tom Harlan-Putus.
Hello, Mayor and Council, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Tom Harlan-Putus, 27, Palmeroy Road. Am I your only visitor?
There's actually, thank you for asking, we have 32 attendees at the meeting, you're
Awesome.
Yep.
Good to know that people are participating. And pretty soon, we're going to be going back live, right, Mayor?
In September.
Not until September, oh my gosh, okay. Well, at least you'll be able to attend meetings from wherever you want to be in the United States, right? I don't know if you're in the town hall right now. I can't tell. So a couple of comments, sir. The first one, ordinance 27, 2021 regarding the appropriation from the General Captain Improvement Fund for the Hartley Dodge Plaza. I don't remember exactly what is the total spend by the borough, I know you're getting some grant money.
Tom, we'll cover, we have a hearing for that, so you should wait, but we'll just capture that, so we'll answer those questions when we
Over the course of the, over the night, we'll hear more about that.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mayor, no problem. The other thing I wanted to ask about is ordinance 29, 2021. I am very happy that the borough is approving some more outdoor recreation space over by the pool. We know that the pool is in need of some other activities to bring more residents to participate in the facility. And hopefully, this is a stepping stone to some more projects. It's a very nice area with good parking and I think that the residents will appreciate this added facility for theirs, for their, for themselves and for the, for their kids. I was, wanted to ask you, please, when I'm done talking, to tell me the timeline of the installation. I know you already completed some of the drainage over there, which is fantastic. I assume it's going to be a double basketball court, but I don't know that for a fact. So you can advise me also when I'm done asking about this. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on is the ordinance 35-2021, which is the appropriation for Recreation Extors, Trust Fund, Remediation Recreation, extortion, trust fund remediation. So this is the construction of a Madison Recreation Complex Trail Project. And maybe it's something you've discussed, and I, I missed the last meeting. So I don't recall what this is. This is a lot of money, though. It's probably half of your annual taxation to the borough for the open space. And recreation tax, so I, I'd like a little explanation as to why spending this much money. On trail improvement is necessary and why it's a priority. To have it approved now as opposed to the list of other items that are on open space. In historic, and that always seems to be a big topic of discussion, Mayor and Council is. What we're doing with that six hundred thousand plus dollars that we tax the community for open space. Very often it goes to some great projects, but every once in a while you see. Items on your list of future projects.
One minute, Tom.
Thanks, Mayor, that sometimes. Need to be vetted a little bit better. I don't know if anybody has reconsidered the second building. That you were going to renovate over at Dodge Field, which is the hut over by the baseball field. The first building that you guys built for the playground. Looks like a nice building outside, but for the amount of money that you spent. I, I don't personally feel it was a good use of that much of our funds. So I hope that you reconsider the project over by the baseball field, which is where we actually run our Christmas tree sale, Mayor. So we do want to keep a building there, but whether we need a new building. For the twenty baseball games that are hosted at Dodge Field, I don't know, and I, I know there's a lot of other good projects. That the borough wants to undertake to help the community have a better. Open space, better historic preservation. I see you're about to cut me off.
Yep, end time.
All right, lovely. Well, nice to talk to you. I'll be here for later.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, and I actually did allow you to comment on ordinances again. For those in the public ordinances have hearings, and so you should be commenting on the ordinance during the hearing or those for introduction, you may comment. During the second comment period. Right now, we should be commenting on resolutions. Or the audit, which is the single agenda item. Now bring up Jeff King to comment on. One of those things, so please state your name, your address, and the resolution or the audit you want to speak to.
Good evening, Mayor Conley. My name is Jeffrey King. I'm at twenty four Elizabeth Parkway in Eaton Town. Just wanted to comment on the resolutions that you have. For renewing the liquor license at the tavern and the Elks. I just feel like liquor is dangerous and that we need to be tougher on. The dispensing and consumption lounges of alcohol. It could be dangerous, and I don't understand why municipalities always just rubber stamp these. Licenses. We don't have much discussion on them. I guess they work very easy and smooth and fluid. So maybe we could. Keep that in mind when we discuss other licenses. Now, there was another comment about, did I hear a resolution for a beer garden?
Yeah, yes, that's part of Bottle Hill Day.
So that's, that's a nice event, I imagine. I'd maybe even be interested in it attending. That's on municipal property?
Correct.
Okay, that's interesting. So consumption public of alcohol, all ages event?
After, I'll capture the rest of your question, but the end of your comment.
All right, thank you. I know, I just, I was just curious about that, because it sounds like a nice event, and I could see that being something that could occur with. Under different circumstances, but. Alcohol is a little bit glamorized in our culture with the Super Bowl and with all the holidays, and. I think that's unnecessary. I think it's. Counterproductive. And then when you put that next to the way other substances are treated, I just wanted to speak against just. Blindly going ahead with alcohol in your resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other hands raised, I close this party meeting. So the. Liquor, there is a process for renewal of liquor licenses, and the last step in the process is the council approval and the. Beer garden is part of Bottle Hill Day, which you may not be aware of, because this has been a long time Madison tradition and the street fair. And. With part of the beer garden being part of the activities. Now we move on to. Agenda discussions. So we'll bring Jim back up.
Mayor, can everybody hear me?
We're good.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the time. I'm going to keep this very brief. This is a ministerial action that we need to take. With passing a resolution accepting the twenty twenty audit and then as. Council Bailey mentioned, the governing body will then have to sign a certification. Accepting it and then finally is a corrective action plan. Every year the auditors come in and review. The Borough of Madison's financial process. It's really about internal controls. How do we work things? Who has control of the checks? Who has control of accepting a wire? Who are approving a wire? Who has. Putting a wire? Who makes deposits? How deposits made? How money is handled? And we have, as you know, separate employees to do many of those jobs. The one corrective action plan that I item note that Austria mentioned. Was the finding which we'll always continue to have, which is adequate segregation of duties. We were able to separate out a number of the issues, but will never be able to resolve, at least at this point, on the way things are. Not having a cashier's window. However, every year, I'm speaking anecdotally. The amount of cash that the borough is receiving for fees and permits is getting less and less. We're having more opportunities for residents to be able to make online payments, which automatically resolves that issue of an employee receiving cash. And then issuing a permit. So it's a relatively small amount of money that the employees are handling. And almost every town, many, many towns have the segregation of duties item that comes up on their audit, so. That something that we're not going to be able to resolve. The other one was, as Councilman Bailey mentioned. An issue with not getting deposits in for dog and cat licenses. It's a very small, under twenty dollar payment. And they weren't getting deposited in three hour time period, which is what is required by New Jersey State statute, so. The auditors caught that during the process and said, hey, you need to improve it, and we actually had already improved it by the time. They had noted the issue. It happened towards the end of twenty twenty, and it was resolved in early twenty twenty one. So those are the only two issues that I mentioned in the corrective action plan. What will happen next is, assuming council passes resolution one eighty eight, which. Accepts the corrective action plan that that document along would be sent down to the state of New Jersey. Along with the certification, the audit will be posted online for anyone to see, and I am, as always, available. If anyone ever has any questions on the audit.
Any questions for Jim or comments on the audit? Great, great work. As Austria already pointed out, we have a great team and very good shape, so we have the. Resolutions one eighty seven or one eighty eight on the consent. And now we're on to ordinances for hearing. Clerk, please read.
Yes, the ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading. At the regular meeting of the council held on June the fourteenth, two thousand twenty one. They were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I will try that again. I'm going back to where I was at the last meeting. I will call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read that order by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating three hundred and sixty five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund. For renovation and restoration of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza.
Hold, 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 hold a second. I got an open hearing for ordinance twenty seven dash twenty twenty one. And we've already had one comment on this, but anyone in the public also wanting to comment on ordinance twenty seven, twenty twenty one. May do so now. And Tom, we'll call you. Welcome you back.
Okay, I'm unmuted now?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Tom Harland put his twenty seven Palmero Road. I, I'm back again, and I. Didn't finish my question because you pointed out to me that it wasn't time yet to ask the question. So. I recall previous meetings when you had discussed, there would be money from the. General Fund, municipal dollars, and then some grant money. So is this a portion of the total that had been presented to the borough in previous meetings, which. If I recall correctly, was eight hundred thousand dollars, but Mayor, you can give me more detail, if, if that's okay. And, and I was also just going to ask again, what's the timeline for completion? It sounded like Councilman Hoover. Said they're moving along at a pretty good pace as far as removing the surface area and. Maybe by the end of the summer, but you just give us an idea of the timeline for completion, and then what's the total spend from the borough and then. What's the matching grant money that you're getting for the project? And is any of the money coming from different funds? Inside the borough's budget? That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll capture those during the discussion period. And you know, anyone else wishing to comment on ordinance twenty seven? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty seven dash two thousand twenty one.
Second.
All right, so this is covering some of the grant money we are receiving, and Jim, are you available to. Outline the various sources. Of the, and, and while you're coming up, the timeframe, we're anticipating six months, but it could be less than that. One of the. Big changes we made from the original project plan, which saves us time and money was, it was going to be phased to maintain a. Open front entrance, which is certainly not necessary since we have a buyer free access to the west side, and so by. Doing all at once, we were able to condense a little bit. Jim?
Yeah, Mayor, my internet's been going in and out, so I missed some of the questions. I apologize that I'm having a storm, or I am, Ray may be able to jump in. But I can tell you that we negotiated the contract down due to, as you said, some changes to the contract that were able to reduce the price. Majority of this ordinance is being quoted in order to be able to pre-fund grant funds that are coming in. We don't, the, the grant funds that we get a reimbursement grant, so in other words, we have to prove that we spent the money, spend the money and everything, and then the grant funds come in afterwards. This is funding to be able to basically allow us to pay for the project, but then we will get reimbursed back. And those funds will, you know, go back into the pot. Ray, I'll let you jump in and add some more numbers. I know you have our little.
Okay, and just to confirm, the money goes right back into the general capital, so it does not, it's not used for anything else except for. To cover exactly what this money is intended.
There's actually three funding sources. One is a two hundred and sixty five thousand dollar grant from Marge County Historic Preservation Fund. That's a reimbursement grant, so we have to complete the project, they inspect it, and if it's to their satisfaction, then they reimburse us. So obviously, the contractor wants to be paid during. The progress of the job and doesn't want to wait to be paid at the end. So two hundred and sixty five thousand of the three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars will be reimbursed. Dollar for dollar from the county. Previously, multiple years ago, the county, the county, the borough appropriated six hundred thousand dollars. From general capital towards the course of this project, and approximately six months ago. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was appropriated out of the open space recreation and historic preservation, and that's an important fund, and that's an important feature. When that referendum was established, it wasn't just for open space and recreation. It also included a component of historic preservation. The overwhelming majority of the expenditures to date have been on the recreation side. Second would be the open space. Acquisitions and third, and the least funded has been historic preservation. This is an iconic structure in Madison. We haven't renovated the building that, that plaza has been there in essence since nineteen thirty four. It's a tripping hazard. We've been notified by our carrier. We've had people fall. It's a dangerous condition, so we think it's well worth the expenditure, be approximately one million dollars. To the contractor Merlin Garagusa, and they've done historic preservation work for us before, and we're happy with the progress to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments from the council? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey? I'm sorry. Yes. Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty seven dash twenty twenty one adopted and finally passed and asked the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety five of the Borough Code and tiled land development to create an R nine multifamily residential zone.
I open the hearing for ordinance twenty eight. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand now or hit star nine. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty one.
Second.
Counsel discussion. Austria?
Yes, I just wanted to give a little background. This is a piece of property on the Wanaka that was part of, that is part of Drew University. It was zoned university, however, there are. Twenty eight condo units there, and Drew University. Asked the borough to rezone it so that it could be sold off. And it became before the planning board. The planning board agreed that this fit in with our master plan. And so it's coming before the council for approval.
And the, their unit, two thirds of units are owned by Drew and the other are in the hands of private. Owners, so it's kind of a, it's a condo type setup. Any, any other? Yes, Rachel?
I think it's important to point out or clarify that the way the zone is described and written, it. Limits the use and development of the property to more or less precisely what is currently there. And so it is written very closely to effectively preserve. The existing buildings, residential buildings, and effectively rezone it from university to residential without. Opening the doors to unmitigated future development. It's really crafted specifically to preserve the existing housing. Which I think was, you know, there was great care taken to write the ordinance in that fashion.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
At the advice of Borough Council, I am abstaining as my husband is an employee of Drew University.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty eight dash twenty twenty one adopted and finally passed and asked the clerk to publish notice thereof newspaper, file the. File the ordinance according to the law. For those that came on late in my opening comments, we will not have a hearing for ordinance twenty nine, which will be a motion to table it. And this is so that we can get all the ducks in the proper order. You know, to answer some of the questions from Tom earlier, the idea is this would be a double basketball court similar to. Dodge Field and which is heavily used and are based are only high quality basketball courts, and so this would. Fill, fill a need for the basketball and pickleball programs in, in the town along with. Other activities from children learning how to ride bicycles as they often do on the Dodge Field basketball court also. The court is planned to be cited completely within the Madison Community Pool lease property, so that is why we are. Going to put things in a different order because entirely clarify the, and update the lease and understand exactly how the. Courts will operate. It seemed to be too early to appropriate the money, so. We'll be bringing back the amended or recommendations to amended. Lease to the council and then following with the reintroduction of the ordinance. So with that, could I have a motion to table ordinance twenty nine dash twenty twenty one?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any counsel discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. That closes our ordinance for hearing, and we now move on to our second for invitation for discussions. So when you may comment on any topic, same rules apply that when you are recognized. Please state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one minute grace and. And ask you to stop at four minutes. And right now, we'll bring up Peter Osberg.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thank you. Peter Osberg, Seven Longview Ave in Madison. I just wanted to thank everyone for listening to my. Um I just wanted to thank everyone for listening to my thoughts. Um I wasn't planning on making a statement once. Twenty nine, twenty one uh was tabled. Uh but I just wanted to get on the record um as sort of contrast to earlier comments. Um about support for this ordinance. Um. I just want to make clear that that I have no issue uh and actually welcome the idea of adding new recreational facilities in Madison. Um I take, you know, the council at its word that the new courts are in the borough's best interest. However, the reality is very different um than what sort of was worded in ordinance. Um quite simply, I view this as. Uh. Use of public funds to upgrade the facilities of a private club. Um I realize that all citizens of Madison will have access to courts. Uh they ultimately pay for outside of pool hours. Of course, the pool is open all summer for majority of the day. And as Mayor Connolly said two weeks ago, the summer is the busiest time at Dodge. But I think that's besides the point. Um, why should my fellow taxpayers accept anything less than equal opportunity access for all our citizens throughout the year for something that we are paying for? The proponents, and I think the actual sponsors of this ordinance uh or project. Have openly campaigned as it is a way to save the Madison Pool. Which is a private organization that is already subsidized by the taxpayers through an essentially free lease and occasional direct cash outlays. Like the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars spent on repaving the parking lot in two thousand and sixteen or eleven, I forget exactly the exact year. If the pool needs saving despite charging rates far in excess of similar pools in the surrounding area, they should look for other solutions and not a taxpayer bailout. We can debate impervious coverage, um safety, concerns about noise and lights and all the sort of nimbyism type things. But all I ask is the council to consider and explain why are we considering signing away even partial rights of a public good for the benefit of a private club? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and as noted that uh still the follow will be the lease and the uh use and your, so your comments are greatly appreciated as we um. Look at exactly how um that use will will occur if this moves forward. And we'll now call up Bridget Daly.
Hi, Bridget Daly, twenty eight Keep Street. Uh my uh comments and questions are also about the um basketball court slash uh pickleball court. Um, it seems like this project is being fast tracked based on pressure from a vocal group of residents. Um or is this part of a comprehensive plan for parks and recreation facilities? That is my first question. I just have several questions, so I'm just gonna rattle them off. Um also, what steps are being taken to include green infrastructure? Uh I'm concerned about adding yet more previous coverage to Madison and. I wonder if that's being taken into consideration as part of a, again, a master plan and the need to factor sustainability into all capital projects. Um I, based on Jim Burnett's presentation. At the last Borough Council meeting, I understand that lighting will be turned on manually. Uh and I just would like to, you know, ensure that uh it'll be on a timer. So that it can't inadvertently be left on all night wasting energy and harming beneficial insects. Um also, I I would like to um echo the previous comments, which I feel very strongly. That the court needs to be open to all. It should be a public facility, not a gated resource. Also, I have concerns about how this arrangement is going to financially impact the pool. Will it increase or decrease their costs? Um as a pool member. I'm really concerned about the recent large increases to the membership fee and the guest fee, which are somewhat egregious. And I would not want to see an ongoing expense that will translate to even higher costs for members. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget, and to capture mostly is uh whether project was fast back. This has been a priority, recommended priority from the Recreation Advisory Committee for a while as the has been pointed out, the uh. Basketball courts at Dodge Field are heavily used and um more programs could be run with more uh. Uh if we had more courts. Um. Impervious coverage and issues and sustainability and uh yes, as if if this moves forward, we need to make sure that um. The um. Project takes everything in consideration, so it minimizes the impact on the environment. Uh related to the uh. Lighting, um yeah, it way, the way it works at Dodge Field, which I think is ideal, is the lights are ma- can be manually turned on, but then they turn it off. Automatically uh by a timer, so that means they're not being turned on if the court is not being used. But if the court is being used, it um turns off. Um. And the other, as far as um. Membership and all that, um we uh kind of captured that a little bit from uh Peter's comments and uh. Um as things move forward, we'll keep that into consideration and what the relationship. Will and this. Project would be, and now we'll call up uh Hugh Giordano.
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
You're a little, you might have a little bandwidth issue. Let's. Go ahead, try again here.
How's that?
Okay, you seem better. Yep.
Okay, great. Um. My name is Hugh Giordano and I'm a union representative for the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW Local one fifty two. We are the official labor union that represents cannabis workers from seed to sale. Both both medical and adult use cannabis workers. Um under the guise of the AFL CIO. Um, we oppose any type of ban or ordinance that does that because it attacks good paying living wage jobs. Union jobs come with healthcare, dental, vision, sick time, paternity leave. Um retirement and a host of other union benefits. Um. On top of that, these jobs are educated jobs. They, these folks that work in the in the industry, whether it's seed to sale. Uh have degrees in horticulture, chemistry, botany, uh currently at uh the medical facilities, there's pharmacists that work there. Um and uh so these are really great uh jobs that give. Young people an opportunity not to have to leave the state and go somewhere else, and on top of that, their union careers. Um. I want to suggest the city of Bayonne's ordinance. The city of Bayonne passed a great ordinance about two and a half months ago. Um because the Cannabis Commission's rules and regs have to do with the application of the people who are applying. The state law has already given home rule to make up your own ordinance of what you want. How many of them you want, whether you want medical, whether you want adult use. Uh whether you want both. Um, so the city of Bayonne also lays out renewal fees, application fees. And a merit based application system. So they look at labor standards. For example. If. They're fighting workers' rights in Colorado, then they're probably gonna fight workers' rights here in New Jersey. If they're polluting in Illinois, they're probably gonna pu- pollute here in New Jersey. So the Bayonne ordinance reinforces what the state wants, and it also gives you local power. Um and it's a great way to get the best employers. So if you want to visit one of our facilities. Was one of the original six to unionize. Uh it was the first one in Woodbridge and they're transparent. Um you can come and visit, uh bring the police, the ch- the police chief as well. Um. And you can see the whole seed to sale operation. And that way you don't have to ask any questions. You've seen it for yourself. You don't have to be familiar with Colorado. Right? You can actually go and see it and you can. The national, the union.
Think we're uh loose, we're losing you there.
Oh, sorry. We, we represent Bacardi and Jim Beam alcohol workers, so we all, so we write, so we understand a regulated market. And we don't demonize the alcohol industry. We don't demonize our members that work in the pharmacy.
One, one minute.
Okay, um I, so I would suggest that you would visit uh the Garnet State Dispensary. Look at the city of Bayonne's ordinance. Again, my name is Hugh Giordano. Um and I represent the UFCW and on behalf of the UFCW and the AFL CIO, we would ask you to please table this ordinance. Um and adopt the city of Bayonne ordinance or something close to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now we bring Tom up again. Welcome back.
Hello again, Mayor and Council, Tom Harland Pudis. Twenty seven Palmeroy Road. Uh I actually was going to ask a similar question about ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty one. Just to hear the borough's perspective on why they would want to prohibit the operation. Not here uh to speak about supporting it or uh totally being against it. I just want to know. I'm sure you guys have heard more about it and and had some discussions on it, so it would be very interesting. For myself and and some of our residents. Who have been talking about also since it's being legalized statewide, but now I know it's up to different municipalities. To legalize legalize. Uh Mayor, before when I asked you about the total spend by the borough for the Hartley Dodge Plaza. If you said it, if you said an amount, I didn't hear it, and I know that Jim said he didn't hear all the questions, so. When I'm done, if you could just tell me what was the original budget and how much you saved, and it's great that we were actually able to save some money. By your strategic move. To allow residents to enter the building. From a side door. I I think that's great, and you guys are always thinking out of the box, so. Thanks for saving us money, so please elaborate there. And then going back again to ordinance thirty five twenty twenty one. Which is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for remediation and construction of a recreation complex trail project. I, you might have spoken about it, like I said at a previous meeting, and I I didn't hear anything about it. It's just a a very large amount of money. And um. You know, I would like to have a little more detail myself. So that we can get some. Some a better picture of exactly what you're constructing for that sum of money. And um I want to comment on ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty one anyway, even though you said it's being tabled. The the previous people who got online. And maybe I'm off base on this, commented about it being. Um. A a club, but I I thought this was just gonna be open basketball and open pickleball courts. And that the pickleball activities would be. Run by the Borough Recreation. Committee. I I don't know if they're referring more to the a a a request for paddle courts. To be put at the pool facility, which I know is gonna be looked at differently. Uh for a a a a private funding or whatever the project evolves to. So unless I'm off base, I'd like some clarification. So that everybody understands exactly. What's gonna be involved in people using those courts, whether it is to teach your kid how to ride the bike or. To go with your neighbors and play pickleball or play organized pickleball ball in the community. Um and that's about it, Mayor. I hope you can answer some of those questions and I. I'm still waiting for that uh that town hall meeting that all of you are gonna host. So we can have an open discussion and we can actually talk to all the other council people and. You know, figure out. What everybody's positioning and some of the good issues. That the borough has in front of them for the future.
Thank you, Tom. Um town hall meeting, I I haven't forgotten that, and I know you won't let me forget that. It it won't happen for months, but that's right. It looks forward to something in the fall. Uh your comment on the most of ordinances, we'll ta- take care of those during the uh discussion during those ordinances. Um the um. And that also include, we'll we'll cover it, cover out the um. The cannabis one also, the discussion around the pool, um. The basketball courts and all that, there and and nothing was finalized and the lease has to be as. Um updated and so on, and how the courts would be used has to be updated, but one of the proposals would be. That the courts would only be available to pool members during pool hours, and so that's what some of these comments are about. That is not. Uh. A. That is still, I would say that's still very much a for discussion and uh all the comments we've heard so far, we greatly appreciate. Um and again, the others will, and Ray. Um. I guess you can. Uh ju- just to quickly go over the numbers again, um. And you've covered the the reasons behind it before, but the, and this was on the Plaza.
The. Yes, yes, Mayor, yeah. The the original um pre-negotiated um. Process where the bids exceeded the the dollars that were available, so we went through a negotiation process with the advice of our attorney. After two rounds of bidding with pre-qualified bidders. Uh that their submissions far exceeded the budget. We were able to negotiate. By we, through that negotiation process, the numbers came down from one point six million to one point one million. That would be funded by a two hundred and sixty five thousand dollar grant. That's a reimbursable grant from the county of Morris, and that's why we have to appropriate the funds because we get paid at the end of the job. But we have to pay the contractor during the job, and there was a previous ordinance for six hundred thousand dollars from the general capital fund. That gets us to eight sixty five. And then we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars about six months ago was appropriated from the open space. Recreation and historic preservation, and as I alluded to earlier. The let, that that's been the 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 smallest expenditure out of those tax funds have been for the use of historic preservation. This is. Our our home and it's iconic building in Madison and needs the investment, and it's a critical insurance issue and a liability issue for the borough, and that's why we're doing it.
Hey, thank you, and we will now bring Jeff King back up again. And same rules apply, three, three minutes, try, but you'll be stopped.
Good evening, uh Mayor, I I uh my name is Jeff King, twenty four Elizabeth Parkway, Eton Town. Uh appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I I just wanted to uh. Apologize if I came on too strong, like I was attacking and insulting you by saying blindly following. That was too, that was too strong of rhetoric. I I just. I wasn't specifically trying to single you and your community out. It's. Really a thing that's going on all over New Jersey and beyond with uh the acceptance and. Um just taking for granted that alcohol is. Perfectly fine and. Maybe someone would say, uh the mayor in my town says if I could uh reduce alcohol, I would, but then. We have more liquor licenses coming in with the uh privatization of the Fort Monmouth uh army property, so. We're getting more, even though he says he doesn't like liquor and alcohol and would like to have less, but we always. Rubber stamp the uh approval of the existing licenses. And uh. I was speaking to Brick, Brick in Ocean County uh. Ban cannabis, but they have a brick fest with a big uh beer tent and alcohol for the whole community and fun for the children and everyone to to be very close to, maybe not necessarily consuming, but. Shoulder to shoulder with it almost, so. I don't understand why that's. Totally okay, and we just have to ban cannabis businesses from even existing in the municipality in the darkest. Corner behind fences and security. And uh checking IDs, we can't, we can't have that. Private for patients, we can't have delivery, we can't have a manufacturing distribution uh. Processing facility. I don't understand why, but alcohol is perfectly fine, no problem in the light of day in public as a fun event. I don't get that, and it's not just you. It's. Point Pleasant did the same thing. I don't understand. Wine's cool. Colts Neck has a distillery, a vineyard. And a brewery. They have all three production methods for alcohol, but they are banning all cannabis. Why are you towns all doing this? What is this stigma? What is this this fear and hatred of cannabis and the people that consume it? I don't understand. Is it because it was the racist propaganda of Harry Anslinger? Starting this mess? You still believe that? You like hearing that kind of racist rhetoric? I don't understand what's going on. Not you specifically. I apologize if it's sounding like an attack. I'm just saying in general, the towns that are banning. Are not really explaining themselves adequately. The people voted resoundingly for this. Your town did. All the towns except Lakewood. That's the only town. So they can say they are standing up for the constituents, but the rest of you are not really technically. And if you were and you wanted to say, we don't want corporate cannabis, we'll speak for home growing rights. I don't understand why the governor lost his nerve on home growing. The rest of the states around us are progressing there, but we aren't. That just shows you New Jersey's corrupt and just be, you're just participating in that in a negative way in a local level. So. That's the the impression you're leaving with people. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh we will, before we bring up R, uh please make sure the first thing is that you're, if you don't have your name listed on the screen here. First thing you state must be your name and address. If failure to do so, we will immediately cut you. Are you are on board?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Marina. Rebman, R E B M A N N. I live at three Borough Square, Parlin, New Jersey. Um I want to tell you my journey with medical cannabis and how much it's helped me. Between the ages of one and four and a half, I had to have multiple surgeries on my lower left leg. That was born with a birth defect. I was in a major New York City hospital. Back then, they did things differently. The parents weren't allowed to stay over. So just picture yourself being a one, two, three and four year old kid, having your mother walk away from you. And picture yourself being that parent, seeing your child. Wanting to spend the night over, but you couldn't because rules were different back then. And the nurses and doctors and the medical staff treated me wonderfully, but I still wanted my mother to stay over the night. And that's where my anxiety started. And that's where my anxiety started with, with, with medical people, medical professionals. Then when I was four and a half, I had to have my leg amputated. And then when I had a bunch of surgeries, and like I said, I had to have, I was wheeled into the operating room. And I couldn't have my mother walk me in there like they do now. I could have my stuffed animal. They would take it away from me. And then unfortunately, in two thousand seventeen, I was diagnosed with cancer. It was horrible. I lost fifty pounds within three weeks. None of the medications they gave me worked. Nothing. It was horrible. And the only thing that worked was medical cannabis. It took me four weeks for me to get my cannabis card. And that was a game changer. I started to eat. I started to live. I started to gain weight, even on chemo, which is a horrible thing. I hope no one ever has to go through that. You know, people say, well, you have delivery. Well, that's an extra charge for people who are on disability. That's an extra charge for people who are dealing with cancer treatments. It's hard, you know, and then you see you have Uber or Lyft. That's also, that's also an added charge going to another town, to another dispensary. That could be another forty bucks one way, forty bucks another way. Back and forth. So that could be like a hundred dollars, eighty dollars. I'm also with Sativa Cross and we, we do these Zoom meetings and we go to town council meetings just to advocate for the sick and disabled. In the state of New Jersey, there are sixty four psychiatrists that prescribe medical cannabis for all sorts of PTSDs. You'll probably have veterans in your town that smoke medical cannabis. They're seeing psychiatrists that are prescribing this. You even have ten pediatric doctors in the state of New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis. There was a child in the state of New Jersey who had a twenty five hour seizure because that child could not get her medical cannabis. I can't say enough. I can't, I can't say enough how wonderful this pharmaceutical, how, 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 how great this medical medicine is. You have four hundred, almost four hundred CVSs in the, in New Jersey, two hundred and eighty Walgreens that prescribe opioids, which are addicting, which causes death, which causes all sorts of.
Thirty five seconds. I missed the one minute.
I'm sorry. Well, just please consider medical cannabis. There's never been a medical cannabis death anywhere, but they have in opioids deaths. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for sharing your personal challenges. We appreciate it. Kirsten Wallenstein.
Hi, this is Kirsten Wallenstein for Westerly Avenue. I also just wanted to make a comment on the basketball pickleball court because it wasn't clear, even though it's being tabled on what the process is, just to get our voices heard. And these things tend to go super quickly. But I've been on the emails from the Rec Basketball Association petitioning for this idea. And I think active recreation is a wonderful idea. But I was taken aback by how aggressive some of these emails were and you know, I just think we're rushing into this very quickly. And I understand people want lots of accessible activities for their families. But I do think it should be inclusive. It should be, it's public funds. It should be for everyone and not just certain hours and not just off hours or cold hours. We have lots of facilities in our town, but it's very hard for many kids to access them either because they don't have the funds, they can't get the carpool to get there, they don't make the team. You know, I've had kids that were cut from teams. Well, you don't have access to those fields anymore. Once you're out of rec, whatever that sport is, but something like pickleball that could be accessible to everyone and, or basketball courts. So I think it's really important that we make this very inclusive and that we don't set up more barriers for kids that just want to be active and be social and be off their screens hopefully too. So thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Appreciate your comments and more, more to come on that. Jamie Van Skyver.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jamie Van Skyver. I'm from Paulsbury, New Jersey. I am also with Sativa Cross. I'm a medical cannabis patient in the state of New Jersey. And I would like to talk to you about not stigmatizing sixty two, I'm sorry, sixty seven point sixty three percent of your residents voted that they wanted legalization for adult use. That doesn't mean usually that they vote for it and don't want access to it. Of course they want, it is a convenience. I understand that there's challenges with the Cannabis Regulatory Commission not setting, you know, regulations yet. But you're, you're, I under, like I, to echo what Mr. Jeff King was saying, we're stigmatizing cannabis, a plant that works with an endocannabinoid system that we have in our body. And then the next breath, we're like renewing liquor licenses and just the hypocrisy. Like alcohol is a depressant. The things that people do on alcohol are we okay with? There's people with chronic illness and chronic pain. I myself suffer from both. I have immune illness, scoliosis, neuropathy. I don't take any pharmaceuticals. I don't take any medications. I use a plant. My conditions are never going away. And I don't know if people understand chronic. Should these people start taking medications? And then you build tolerances and in turn your body needs them once more and you need and take more. We need to have other options for people. If there's an undesired exposure to cannabis and a possible trip to an emergency department, nobody's getting pumped stomach, filtered blood, anything. You're going to be held for observation. It's impossible to like overdose. I've been in an emergency medical system. You're not using any Narcan. Your Narcan's going up. And this is for the substances that you're putting out of the pharmacies, the OxyContin, the Fentanyl, the Percocet. It's never going to be used for cannabis. Your constituents want it. And I suggest you listen to them or they're going to be voting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And now we bring up Susan Graham.
Susan Graham actually is not able to speak because she's using an older version of Zoom that does not allow her to speak.
Okay, we now have David Johnson with his hand up. We'll bring him up.
Okay, thank you. This is David Johnson. I live at Four Ross Court in Madison. I've lived here for seventeen years as an adult and three years as a child. And I just want to express my strong opposition to sales of cannabis, CBD or any of the other marijuana drugs in the town of Madison. I have two kids. One is nineteen and one is twenty one. And I can tell you that one of my kids got in trouble for using in school and was expelled. And just the same as any Madison child can, can get access to vaping products. If these products were for sale in the town of Madison, I'm pretty sure they would figure out how to get it. Not for medical use, but for recreational use. And I don't think anybody on this board or in the town of Madison wants our children to be smoking marijuana, using CBD products that are not prescribed by a doctor. So all of the people I've heard speak so far have been all for this because they want to take it for tax revenue, business revenue, a way to make money. And as a parent and a resident of Madison, I don't want our town turned into a place where it is yet another portal to deliver drugs like vaping products that are not only hurting our, our kids' health, but are messing up their academic plans and their academic futures. So I thank you for having a strong stance in banning the sales of marijuana, CBD and any other related products in our town. We're just, we, it, it's, we're, it's nice to have a clean town where it's safe. We don't have to worry about our children going into a store and having someone scrupulous retailer sell them the stuff the way that they've been doing with vaping products. And just last comment, thank you for all your, your work on the board. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Suzanne, we'll give you a try again if you can come on.
Still not working, Mayor.
Okay, still not working. We will now bring up Sean.
Hi, can you hear me? This is actually Suzanne Graham.
Okay.
Um, so I'm actually would like to speak about the basketball and pickleball courts proposed at the pool.
Just add your address, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at sixty eight Knollwood Avenue in Madison. So firstly, I'd like to just mention that there are courts at Lucy D Del Barton and they barely get used. And what about the MRC? That's supposed to be a sports complex. We live across the street from the pool. And honestly, this will be affecting our way of life. There, there'll be the lighting, there'll be noise, there'll be traffic. My younger son talks about how at Dodge Field, they play the music with the bad words. We don't want that blasting across the street from our house. Additionally, Dodge Field basketball courts are known for having garbage. Who's going to clean up the mess? And I know that there was a, the drainage has that results of the environmental studies been posted. We're, we're just extremely concerned about how this is going to affect us living across the street from something that when we moved here, it obviously wasn't here. And now this is going to be loud, bright, traffic. It's going to be not good for us. And I hope that you will take that into consideration when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, for your comments. And I also appreciate it. And I thank you for your patience and perseverance in getting your audio to us. Seeing no other hands raised. I now, all right. We have one, one hand just got in there just in time. But Lefty Grimes, it's you know, comment three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Edward Lefty Grimes. I'm with SativaCross.org. We're a five oh one C three here in New Jersey advocating for disabled rights and for cannabis patients' rights. And I'd like you to consider people in wheelchairs. I want to consider the sick and dying when you make any kind of decision on whether to ban people's medicine. You have, you're not stigmatizing the pharmacies that are selling man-made THC, man-made marijuana. But we're stigmatizing God's medicine. Why, why are we stigmatizing God's medicine? He sold in a pharmacy under Marinol and Jonabinol. It's sold every day in the pharmacies. Why are we not up in arms about that? Why are we not freaking out? But God's medicine gets stigma, stigmatized. I, I don't understand that. And I ask every council to spend a day in a wheelchair and see what it's like to live in a wheelchair. I don't know if you've ever met anybody with cancer or in a wheelchair, but we need to put the last first. We don't do that in New Jersey. And I urge you to take that cancer tax, that wheelchair tax that they're offering on us. Oh, we're getting overtaxed. All right. We're getting, patients need your help because we're getting seven percent taxed by the state, two percent taxed by the towns. Are we getting representation for that taxation? No. We have no wheelchair access in a lot of these towns that are taking that wheelchair tax money. That's what we want. We want representation for that taxation. You want to tax our, our diseases? Fine. Do not tax on your stuff. Do not tax on your heart medication or your insulin or your, your anxiety medication. No, we get taxed. Sick and dying people on disability are being taxed. We're getting moldy medicine from corporate cannabis. I urge you to get a small craft cannabis mom and pop store. Raise up the working class people. Give them a, give them a mom and pop store. Don't bring in these big corporations that are building their, their industry on the backs of the sick and the dying. That's what they're doing. They're selling us moldy medicine to cancer patients, moldy medicine to people that would have immune compromised. Are you kidding me? There's no compassion. This is all about money. I urge you to take care of our vets, our vets. You want our vets to go to another town to get their medicine? People in wheelchairs? We always complain about the vets, the vets, the vets. Well, I know a vet that can't get his medicine. He has to go an hour to get his medicine. And he was a medical patient for years. For PTSD, he watched his whole team die in front of him. And now he's got cancer. On top of all that, now he's got cancer and we're not taking care of vets. I can tell you right now. Because my friend is suffering and they banned it in his town. And you got vets in your town that you're banning it for. How far do you want to go in a wheelchair? Spend a day in a wheelchair and you, you tell me how far you want to travel for your medicine. Spend one day in a wheelchair. Please put the last first. There must be a Christian on this council somewhere, somewhere. There must be a Christian that believes putting the last first, putting those people in wheelchairs at the front of the line instead of the back of the line.
One minute.
Advocate for. And I'll end it with this. Because my friend, and I appreciate you doing this online meeting because for years, disabled people have been asking for what we have right now, for these online meetings, for online school, online church, online council meetings. And now a lot of these towns are taking it away. And for fourteen months, you gave it to healthy people. Now sick people, people in their deathbeds want these same things that you gave to healthy people for fourteen months. And a lot of towns are saying, well, we can't do that anymore. Or we don't do this. We, well, yeah, you did it for fourteen months for healthy people. I have disabled people need that help. So please put the last first. That's all we ask. Put the last first. Very simple philosophy. They went with songs to the battle. They were young, straight of limb, true of eye, steady in the glow. They were staunch to the end against odds uncounted. They fell with their faces to the foe. They shall grow not old as we that are left to grow old. Age shall not weary them nor the years condemn at the going down of the sun. And in the morning, we will remember them. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll bring up Alan. Alan, unmute yourself. Okay, I think you're unmuted. State your name and address. You are not coming through. We apologize. At this point, there are no hands raised. I now close this part of the meeting and we now move on to introduction of ordinances. Thanks. Thank you for all those who have commented tonight. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for July twelfth, two thousand twenty one. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading. Ask Borough Clerk to reset ordinance by title. Ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter one ninety five of the Borough Code entitled Land Development to prohibit the operation of any class of cannabis businesses within the geographical boundaries of the Borough of Madison.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty one.
Second.
And as was discussed earlier, your full regulations are not out there. And so this council has decided the best course of action at this point is to opt out. This is not a locked in. And so if at any point this council or a future council wishes to change, that certainly is a possibility. But we appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Any other comments from the council? Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm calling in by phone and I'm hopeful that you can hear me. Okay. Is my voice?
Good. Yep.
Okay. So I wanted to add some context and information to this discussion because if this issue draws as much attention as the proposed basketball courts, then over the next couple of weeks, we'll be hearing quite a lot about it in town and at subsequent council meetings. So to give a little context, some of this great information was provided at a presentation, I believe in May. And I'm going to recap some of that information for everyone listening tonight and to give some context to the way I'm going to vote to, to advance this ordinance. So as was mentioned by one of the commenters, New Jerseians voted more than two to one to legalize marijuana for adult recreational use in last year's ballot question. That's sixty seven point zero eight percent of New Jersey voters who voted yes to legalize. Madison topped the state percentage slightly with sixty seven point six three percent of Madison voters voting yes to legalize. And so this year, New Jersey passed legislation entitled, quote, "The New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act." So this act authorizes municipalities to So this act authorizes municipalities to enact ordinances that govern the number and type of cannabis establishments and businesses from retailers to growers and manufacturers to delivery services. The act permits towns to adopt ordinances specifying the number, location, manner, and times of operation of cannabis businesses. Towns may establish civil penalties for ordinance violations, set license fees, set retail and cultivation taxes, and permit consumption areas for retail licenses. All of this is a tall order from a regulatory perspective, but the state has left these determinations to each town. The same act also authorizes municipalities to prohibit the operation of any class of cannabis business except delivery services originating outside the municipality. So we have two tracks here and a path to choose. Because if we pursue neither of these options, then we lose our ability to do either, either one of these for five years under the state law. If we choose the regulatory track, we are required to establish a myriad of interconnected rules, maps, taxes, and penalties all by August twenty-second. That's less than eight weeks away in order to regulate this new type of business locally. Once the mayor and council have an opportunity to see the impact of this new law and hear from Madison residents and businesses, I trust that we will have the precedent and the resonant feedback to embark knowledgeably and confidently on the regulatory track if so desired. In the meantime, to reserve Madison's right to create such regulations in the future, I'm in favor of hearing this ordinance. We will have the option to keep it if we like or to repeal it and enact a future ordinance if that is the direction Madison wants to go. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rachel. Any other comments? A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety-five of the Borough Code entitled Land Development to include a preliminary environmental checklist.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-one.
Council discussion?
This, too, was brought before the planning board. It's recommended by the planner and totally supported by the Madison Environmental Commission.
Thank you. And roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the two thousand twenty-one sanitary sewer improvements program.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-two. There's two thousand twenty-one.
I second.
And this is again part of the capital that was proposed earlier. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of fiber and other security equipment.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-one.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for building repairs and renovations at the Public Works Garage.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-four dash two thousand twenty-one.
I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Hey, ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for remediation and construction of the Madison Recreation Complex Trail Project.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one.
Second.
And there was questions around, this is funded through the, substantially funded through the county trails program. And this is putting the money forward for reimbursement. Austria, do you want to add?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So well, first, I'd like to just give a history. The open space and recreation master plan states that our open spaces, we support them being connected with different trails. So we've tried very hard to get, you know, get pieces of property that put together different parks. And we would also like to see handicap accessible trails where we can, and we don't have any in Madison. So several years ago, it was brought to the Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Advisory Committee that we do a handicap accessible trail from Ridgedale Avenue through the MRC down to the community garden and back again. And it was supported by the council and an application to the Trails, County Trails Committee was made, and we were awarded a grant to construct a handicap accessible trail. And this trail is from Ridgedale, but it also, Ridgedale has sidewalks and can take you up to Summerhill Park. So there's that connection of the two parks. So part of the trail is in the contaminated area of the MRC. And three hundred thousand dollars was given to the borough to help by the previous owner of the MRC property to help with the remediation of the contaminated land so that we can then set the trail down and use some of that land. So that is what the project is. It's the, we've asked for, we are asking for an extension of, for completion because COVID and everything slowed the project down. We had, I think, eighteen months to actually complete the trail. And we're asking for an extension. It should take place this year. We're getting all, you know, bids now.
Any further discussion or comments?
Austria, just a quick question. So this is going to start, you've got the driveway or the roadway driveway that goes into where the parking lot is? This is going to be kind of next to that on the left-hand side?
Yeah, as you're going in the property, it will be on the high school side. And it will actually, we will actually be able to create a loop for it. So it won't be walking in and walking out. There'll be some, you know, variety.
Good. No, it's just, it's nice because it's always, I mean, I've sent my kids across and just, you know, tell them to be careful as they go. And then will it connect with the paved path?
The what?
Will it connect with the paved path that comes from the high school side? Or is that it's going around the far side of the MRC?
No, it's going on the far side of the path. No, yeah.
Thank you. And I'm thrilled to hear it'll be handicapped accessible.
Right. And the Cheshire home people are very happy that we're finally doing it.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, can I just reinforce that I know Tom Harrell Laputis raised the question about open space tax dollars? These are not open space tax dollars. The donor restricted donation of three hundred thousand dollars from Rock GW towards the, was dedicated towards remediation. It was deposited into a reserve account in the open space because our CFO felt that was the most appropriate place. But those funds were not generated by resident tax dollars. And the remainder is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant coming from the county. Again, it's reimbursable. So we have to advance the money. And then when we get paid from the county, the money goes back into the pot it came out of. So no tax dollars from Madison residents are being used for this project. And I think that's an important feature that Austria's done a great job securing these grants.
Thank you. Good point. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
And now we move on to Consent Agenda Resolutions. Will clerk please read the statement?
Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in the form of minutes.
Mayor, I move resolution one seventy-nine dash twenty-one. Resolution one ninety-seven dash twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled?
Mayor, we pull one eighty-two dash twenty-one, the Waverly Place Reconstruction Project.
All right. Rachel, is that what you were gonna?
No, I was just going to give a little information about Resolution one seventy-nine, which is the water meter pilot program. I think something worth highlighting about this contract, which is a pilot program, was long discussed and eagerly awaited. I think the borough did a nice job in selecting this company to perform the pilot program. It's a local company with a female owner and CEO. They offered the most competitive pricing, and I think it's great that we can choose to do business with women-owned businesses and help support those ventures.
Again, any other comments? Okay, roll call vote on the Consent Agenda Resolutions outside of one eighty-two.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Hey, motion for Resolution one eighty-two, twenty-one, Resolution authorizing three hundred and fifty thousand dollar NJDOT municipal aid application for Waverly Place Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Second.
And as mentioned in my outline of the resolutions, this is time sensitive. And we are still in the design phase, and we'll be getting feedback on the various design elements as soon as we get further down the line from all the major stakeholders, including chamber members, obviously, business owners, DDC, and of course, the council. Other comments?
Yeah.
Austria, and then Deb.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I want to say that I will support this because we don't want to give up the chance for dollars. And as Bob Vogel, the borough engineer, explained to me today, there are, there's flexibility with the grant and if we awarded the money. But I want to assure everybody that the stakeholders will be asked for their thoughts and opinions and that there's a long process that takes place before any of this can be, you know, something set in stone or, you know, a plan has not been developed yet, and the council has not seen a plan yet. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, Deb.
Along the same lines as Austria, she said most of what I wanted to say, but I just want to confirm that if we end up with a totally different design based on the feedback from Historic Preservation and Planning Board and DDC and Chamber and Council, that that's okay. I'm not saying we will. I mean, all we've seen is the one little concept design that's part of the grant application. But it's not contingent on it resembling that at the end.
Correct. And one of the most, I think the key thing here is we don't want to leave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of
Absolutely. I agree that we should, we should go for the grant and try and get it as long as there's that flexibility, which it sounds like there is.
And no matter what the project is in its final state, it is fairly involved. Minimally, if you're there during heavy rains and things like that, you'll notice the lack of stormwater inlets on Waverly Place and other issues related to that. So there is quite a bit. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Thank you. And there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
Yes, for the current fund, we have four million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars and one cent. For the General Capital Fund, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars. For the Electric Operating Fund, five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, twenty-four cents. The Electric Capital Fund, fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. For the Water Operating Fund, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, thirty-four cents. The Water Capital Fund, fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. For the Trust, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, fourteen cents. The total is five million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yeah.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Hey, only new businesses, but wish everyone a very happy Fourth of July, which is on us already, which is hard to believe.
Same to you.
Thank you. Mr. Landrigan?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and keep cool and keep hydrated.